Eric.
How are you doing?
Good.
Are you doing good?
Good, good. I'm Christine Thomas.
Oh, okay. Hopefully she's okay.
Yeah.
Good, good. Good to see you. Nice to meet you. All right. Where are these two chocolate kisses coming from? Don't need this, don't need this, don't need this. Shalom, 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 shalom. Shalom.
I never wear a hat.
You got a haircut. Oh, you got a haircut. That's what it is.
Haircut, yeah.
Yeah, just not used to that. It's the hair that looked like the hat. Call it what you may. Oh, let me see.
Well, you?
Good.
Good, good.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you. Hi, hi, hi.
Chief of Mayfair.
Hey, nice to meet you. Good to see you.
Hello, Brad. Eric, you doing okay?
Yeah.
Good. Staying busy? You have a lot of travel?
Yeah, I'm gonna be here next.
Oh, yeah. You're what?
About to keep me busy.
Oh, I bet.
And we have a new ship launching in November. For Celebrity.
Wow. Is Celebrity a part of Royal?
Hmm?
Really?
Here's the mayor. Anybody know where the mayor is?
I can't even work.
Excuse me, mayor? No, I just ask and you shall receive. I asked for the mayor and the mayor shows up. If it was only that easy.
Oh, there he is. I was gonna say, Joe's not here?
Oh, no, Joe's here. Joe started the pledge already.
We have the workshop for Scott. Call to order, Miniola City Council Workshop. If all rise or a moment of silence?
Vice Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In review.
Are we doing the workshop first?
Yeah.
Looks good. Thank you.
Looks good.
Good, good. With that said, public comment? Anybody anything about the workshop? Bringing it back. Discussion. Scott, are you leading this one?
Yes, I'll kind of kick it off. And I know we've had a ton of workshops on the impact fees and some of you may be tired of talking about them, but the first part of the workshops that we had were to go over the, focusing on the study and the numbers and the amount of the impact fees, but then the, because of the amount of the impact fee increase, the statute typically requires those to be phased in unless there are extraordinary circumstances which have been demonstrated by the study to justify raising them at one time. However, to do that, you have to have two public workshops that are quote, dedicated to the extraordinary circumstances necessitating the need to exceed the phase in limitations set forth in the statute. So, last workshop we had, that of course was the focus of that, that's, that workshop, and this is the second of two focusing on the extraordinary circumstances. So, Florida Water, who had done the impact fee studies and also had discussed the extraordinary circumstances, did a PowerPoint which you saw last meeting. We have that. I don't know if that's available here tonight that we can, or if you've got, it's in your packet.
I think.
I remember. Are you good with it?
Mm-hmm.
If you want, we can go through that again. I'm getting a lot of, or if there's anyone in the audience that wishes. Chris is here tonight. He's been very instrumental in helping us through this as the findings director.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'm good.
We do not have to go through that whole, whole PowerPoint again unless you want to.
Do you have any questions for Chris?
Chris is here if you want.
I don't. Good evening, Chris. I don't have any questions for you, but thanks for being here.
Any questions for Chris, Jeff?
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Good. And then if there's any one in the audience, of course, that has any questions about the impact fee extraordinary circumstances, they have that opportunity, or they can pass.
Okay.
Okay? Well, as I said, the main reasons, just to at least focus on that, that was put forth in the stat, in the PowerPoint, was the highlights of which were Miniola's single-family residential building permits the last four years have averaged more than double of the previous six years. Miniola's water and wastewater capacity must be upgraded to meet the demand. The costs, as you know, particularly after COVID, for infrastructure improvements have increased two and a half to three times the pre-COVID costs. And the amount of growth, the unprecedented growth, has created an unusual spike in construction costs. So, based on that, we are asking during the regular meeting tonight that at second reading, we pass the, the impact fees. Per the statute, they're, they don't take effect for 90 days, so they'll be taking effect the end of September. And we have to have a supermajority vote to pass that, so I'm glad everybody's here tonight.
Is that it?
Yeah, I've talked enough. I can already tell, so.
Anybody else? Any closing comments? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Questions?
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Call to order, Miniola City Council. If all rise for a moment of silence, and Vice Mayor, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? Oh, sorry, agenda review?
Looks good to me. Thank you.
Public comment? Project updates? Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to Eric. You wanna run this piece, please?
Our librarian could not make it tonight, but if we can go through. Fred, you wanna provide an update on the library? And Chief, if you'll do one on the fire station after Fred on the library.
So, the library was pretty much status quo from my last conversation. Everything's going fine. We had the, the setback with the furnishings in the library, the metal shoveling. It was put back for about two and a half weeks, so, but other than that, everything's on point, everything's on schedule and moving along fine. So, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to make an attempt to answer it.
We'll work on that. I'll work on the other issue.
Yep. We saw the tentative opening date of September 1st.
Due to the, the setback with the furnishings, we're looking at the end of September now.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is an American company. They had an issue not with material supplies as we initially believed, but with, with a cyber issue. And so that's what caused the delay on their part.
Oh, what issue?
Cyber issue.
The data breach? Did they get, was Miniola part of that data breach?
No. We don't. They communicate through the contractor.
Okay. Okay. Good. Any questions for Fred? Okay, what's the next one?
All right, Chief, if you can give an update on the station. You go ahead and take both stations if you, if you will while you're up there.
Sure. The doors have been installed at the station next door. They are fully operational. Station's now secureable. Doors work great.
How do they, do they work what you expected?
Yeah, they're, they're great.
I'd like to stop by one day and see them open one day. Not tonight, but sometime.
Yes, sir. They, powers to them. There is a, there's some hood work that's gonna go over to cover the motors and some of the stuff that's on the outside of the building. Received information on that today. Turnaround time on that's gonna be about four weeks. And then those will be painted the same color as the doors to kind of hide that contraption, you know, on top of it.
So, before we go any further, is everybody okay with it being the same color as the doors? I'm fine with whatever color.
The doors of the building?
The doors, I believe, is what me and Fred had discussed.
I'm fine, I'm fine either way. I just wanna make sure everybody else doesn't like.
Well, and I can just explain the logic. We had, we had discussed whether we were gonna do it the same color as the building or whether we're gonna do it the color of the doors, but the way the, the overhang sticks out, it comes out, I believe it's four feet, and these are gonna come out a couple inches beyond the overhang. So with that, we thought it might look kind of tacky if we did the building color. If we just do the same as the door color, it'll all look like one unit. That's kind of there, so.
As long as it's not red and white striped, I think we're good.
Well, we dodged the red, so we went with the, the color that, you know, kind of complements the building. That's where we're at with that.
Cool.
I want it red and white, but never mind.
Like a circus dance. So, thank you.
I mean, we can always have a re.
And then that will be, once that's done, then that's a checkmark and that project's off the list?
Yes, sir. Right now, that, that project, really the doors were the big thing that we were waiting on for completion there. And then from that point, like I said, we've been operating out of it. The guys absolutely love the station.
So, in my opinion, in your opinion, I will not be here when this happens. As you design out the new fire station, do you think you'll use the same type of doors in the next fire station? Not buying it from overseas, but do you like the way they work?
I, in, in my opinion, I, I think we should use the same type of doors. I think that something that we should look at doing is lengthening the bay. So, the, the contraptions and the doors will actually open interior, and then it'll have a cleaner look on the outside, but with the length of that bay, it was, you know, there was, there was no way to put them that way.
And, and that's fine. I know we learned, I know they had to change. I was just curious if you.
In my opinion, I think, I think those doors are gonna last longer than the building, to be honest with you.
They're pretty.
There's no hydraulics. It's pretty much, I think, the only thing, it's pretty heavy gauge steel. I think the only thing that, that could fail in that over time might be that motor, as electronics do, but for the rest of that, we're not dealing with hydraulics, hydraulic fluid. I mean, it's a, that's a pretty, pretty nice setup. They open pretty quickly and.
Cool.
There's a manual override.
It seems like the door people seem to be good partners. I heard my understanding, so that's good.
We, once we made the decision to move forward with the new company, we, it's, it's been a pretty seamless process.
Cool. So, station number two, sorry.
So, station, station.
I'm sorry, before we move on, are we having a ribbon cutting or anything for the new fire?
We absolutely will. We wanna make sure the building's completely done. Part of why we painted City Hall was in preparation for that ribbon cutting.
Right.
And we're going to do some other onsite improvements here. And once all that's done and the hoods are on, we're gonna plan a ribbon cut.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry.
All right, station two. We were given directive a little while back to talk about the site plan to come up with a decision. Ultimately, the decision was made that, you know, we would like the council to give direction on whether you guys want that site plan as presented, or you want us to put it on the road. So that, that's where we're at with that.
I personally will go either way. If somebody feels strongly about it, then I think they'll pretty much win out, but Joe, do you still feel strongly about it on the road? Do you feel still, still feel strongly about bringing it to the road?
I don't care where it is, as long as you can see it from the street. From Hancock Road. I don't want anything between the fire station and Hancock Road.
Okay. It's not really a lot of directs.
Well, that, that's where we're at. And the, the, the station two project is pretty much on hold until we can chisel down where that site plan's gonna go. That's the, the bottleneck that we're at now. So, we can, either we can approve the, the one that was presented that's off the road, or we could take it back to Inspire to have it redesigned to be moved to the road.
If we go with the one that's off the road, councils, future councils could build something in front of it. That's, I mean, I wanna respect Joe's wishes. He's like, oh, you can build where it is, you just can't build anything in front of it, but there's no guarantees. I have like concern about other pieces of property in the city as council cycles through, that other councils could come and override things that we've wanted to do. So, in my humble opinion, to respect what Mr. Saunders wants, I would prefer just put it on the road and just move it forward.
Agreed.
Just so we don't have this, I don't, you know.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll take, we'll, I'll get with Inspire. We'll, we'll take a look at some of the renderings we had done previously.
And just shift it forward.
We can see if maybe we can use the current one, shift it forward. We just have to look at the way the cross-connect happens and how that all works out, but.
Is that, you understand my position? Are you good with that, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay.
One question, I know that we had kind of kept the northeast corner of the, the, the land open. If we do that, we may have to shift up into that northeast corner. And as long as, I mean, we could, we can take a look at it. I just, if there are any other directions that we need to.
If you don't mind, when you come up with it, if you can just, I know he was instrumental in this fire station. If you can get with Mr. Saunders' opinion on some of those, I'll support whatever Mr. Saunders says.
May not be able to get it all the way in the front, 'cause we'll have to have that road tie in.
That's fine. I'm just saying, if you can just.
Okay, so that's, that's where we're at with two. There's been no further advancement on two because we're waiting on that directive for the.
So, did you, you gave enough directive to?
Sure, absolutely.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get working on that and we'll get that moving forward. Those were, those are the two projects I have. The only other project that we had listed was the tower truck. I would just make the suggestion moving forward that we call that capital project complete, 'cause that truck is fully completed. Some of our guys attended. We did some mutual training and got six of our drivers aerial operation certified on that. So, the training is still undergoing. We're still waiting on staffing, but as a capital project standpoint, it's, it's locked, unloaded, ready to roll.
And I haven't, I haven't been out there in a while. Did you, I know they said they were gonna, did you get the electrical cords dropped down? Do you have those?
Actually, I'm glad you reminded me. They're installed now. They're not functional, but he put them all up.
That's fine. As long as they're directly moving, I know they had bought them. I was like, okay.
Yes, sir. We, we ordered those. Those are, those are up. He just has to finish wiring them in to get them.
For those who don't know, for some reason, there was, in the, in the whole bay, there was one electrical outlet in the whole bay. So, that was noted for the next one, right?
That was before me. Sorry.
I know. I'm just saying, yeah.
I believe that's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
So, thanks. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
On that one, do you, does he need to come back to the site plan, or, I'm just trying to say, does he need to keep him back every Tuesday on the fire station, or can he start coming? Give him?
Oh, no, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, you can, every once a month, I think it'll be fine, Chief.
Sure. I mean, I'm happy to be here whenever you guys need me.
Yeah, I'm just, if it's just like a work onsite plan, it's like, there's nothing really going on. It's, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Yeah, next one, Mark, would be the Grassy Lake Road striping, widening and stop signs.
Yeah, Fred, you wanna mention that? That's all part of the larger project of education in Grassy Lake. It's all one. We have it combined into one project.
Yeah, so we're still working out the, the permitting with the Reserve at Miniola HOA in reference to using that retention pond. But other than that, we're moving forward. We're scheduled to set that out to bid on July 14th. And so we're moving forward from, from there.
Do you still have the tentative date of summer 26th, or no?
At this point, yes. Pending, pending the bid outcome of all of that. So, summer 26th is the goal, like we discussed before, at this point, right.
Okay.
The, now with Grassy Lake, we are gonna meet with the county soon. That is their roadway. So, you know, they, they're gonna need to find that construction, so we're gonna meet with them, not this Thursday, but next, to, to, to get that kind of hammered out. And where that other crosswalk is needed, to prevent it from being a mid-block crosswalk, there's gonna have to be a stop sign there, so that, there will be a stop sign in that other additional crosswalk. It's not, not there yet.
Okay. Next is the speed monitoring project for Oak Valley.
We had, we had crews, construction companies out here Saturday to install them. We wanted to double-check the location of those, so they, you know, we're gonna meet with the person that laid those out and double, just triple-check. That's where they, they're supposed to go by the traffic engineer, and they're ready to go and be installed.
What he said. So, it should be done by the end of the week, hopefully.
All right, we're at the wastewater treatment plant.
Fred and Dan both. Wastewater treatment plant. They are, they are in design while they're coming up. They are designing a, a different sort of layout than what was originally designed by the engineers. It's, we are looking at a different treatment system as well. Right now, we have, it's called a Kruger system. And they're going in to look at doing a carousel-type system. It's less technically challenging, and it, you can treat more for the same square footage. So, that's what they're looking at doing now. And we're also looking, in order to speed the projects up, we're looking, we're working on a CMR, or CMAR, construction manager at risk. So, we're going through that process and, and getting ready to try to get that bid together and get it bid out. And that should help speed up the construction of it.
So, I think the last time we spoke, I think we were, we were concerned that we were at 70% capacity at current limit. I think we were gonna go back, you guys are gonna go back and double-check that. We still at that, or where, where do we stand?
So, so, current, I did, we looked at some stuff. We utilize 250 gallons per customer, household, to project the flows for future. What we found is, we have 4, 4,200 wastewater customers currently. Using those numbers and the current flow rate coming to the plant, we're more in the order of 170 gallons per household, or per customer. So, it, we're, in reality, receiving less than what, the more conservative 250 number. So, if even if you round up to like, let's say, 200 gallons a minute for future projections, you will get your buffer that you're looking for. We'll be at 820,000 gallons by 2026, 940,000 gallons by 2027, 1.06 by 2028, and if everything goes well, by then, the carousel, the Bardent Road system will be built. And we will only be left with other appurtenances to get us to the 2.5. We'll, we'll have the main guts of the plant built so that we won't be caught behind the eight ball on, to, to worry about the growth like we were last time we were in here.
If you don't mind, hold on one second. If you can help me, I just, Andy talking to my head, too.
So, you, you were using the driver of 255 for household. Honestly, the realistic number is 170, but you all kind of went with the split and said, let's just say it's 200. So, we went too high when we forecasted. We, we're not gonna bring it down to axles, but we're gonna go a little higher.
And the other.
And by that, that bought you a little bit more time.
And the other kind of good news right now is, in the last month and a half, we've been below the 700,000 range. In the 620 to 650. So, that, I think as it, to do with snowbirds, I'm assuming. But we've had a less than normal last month and a half, so, that helps as well.
Del Webb's saving us. The, the, the snowbirds of Del Webb are skewing us.
Is that what it is? I, I don't know. I didn't realize you had such a snowbird community here, but apparently you may. So.
I think schools being out and pack that as well.
That, that combined with the CMAR route and trying to get this done in the next two years, puts us to what, like 2027, 2028. You will be at 1.06 in 2028, even with some delays. I think that's a good number, and you're, we will have 1.2 built, ready to. We'll have 1.2 once I get the aeration ironed out, and I should have that done in the next few months.
Okay.
There are, there are a lot, there are a lot of factors beyond our control with state legislation and things which could accelerate growth. Also, anytime, you know, we agree to higher densities, that could be a factor as well, but based on what we know today, that's, that's the information that they have.
Uh, next we have the GFL contract for the negligence and.
Yep. So, we've met, we've met with the government representatives and kinda give them our demands on what we'd like to see. And we, they're going back to their, to their team and gonna get us some answers, and we'll hear what they have to say when they come back.
What about the mitigation plan that they said they were gonna provide? Cleaning the streets, the mitigation?
Oh, the mitigation plan? They, they are working on that. They hired a different company than what they used to use. That company was here last council meeting to kind of go over how they're, how they're treating it with a biological agent and how their processes work. And they don't just go over it one time. They have a whole series of cleanings that they do over the same spots over a period of time. And so they came and kind of talked about their, their technique and, and shared the roads that they're working on. I can have them come back at another meeting if you'd like.
Has anybody in the city confirmed that when they say a street is cleaned, the street is actually cleaned?
So, we, we had our primary code enforcement officer working on that. And since then, we have not had someone going out checking behind them. But we, we will have. We'll have them go out there.
Okay. It's actually gonna be my reports, but this was for the RFQ for the trailhead, RFP for the trailhead park improvements. I believe that bids were due on the 30th, so yesterday. Do we have any updates on how many bids were submitted?
Fred can speak to that. We did have a bid opening yesterday. Fred can speak to that. We did have a bid opening yesterday.
I think we had three bids, is that correct, Fred?
Two bids came in.
Two?
So, at the pre-bid meeting, we had three companies present for the mandatory pre-bid. And so, going through the questioning process, and we did the bid opening on yesterday afternoon, and we had two bids returned. Looks like the third company, which was a playground company, partnered with both, both the other two companies, who intact under their bids. So we had two come in. There was Gold Mayor's Construction at 3.6 million, and SCG Fields at 3.9, for the overall project.
The next steps on that, Mr. Hernandez, is what? Next steps on that, do we have to vote through a council?
Yeah, they're gonna, before they do anything, they're gonna go through and kinda just verify all the bids, make sure nothing was missed, verify their references and everything. And then they'll come back before the CRA and the council with a recommendation of award.
So, at that point in time, y'all can make sure that we're comparing apples to apples on this?
Yes. Anything that was called out specifically in the RFP, we'll make sure it meets that. And there's some, there's some wiggle room in the RFP that where some, some things were not called out specifically. So as long as they meet that criteria, and we check the box on that, you know?
Keep in mind, when, when we, once we hire the contractor, there may be some challenges, because, you know, we were bidding it out on concept. So there may be, it may lead to, to more challenges than the normal, and more change orders than normal, but it can be done, so.
Okay. Did we have, did we have a, in the packet, where they need to have a contingency, so that we don't get hit with a million different change orders? And we have some sort of wiggle room in there?
I don't recall, Fred. Do you know?
No, there was not. So, and, and that's where some of the stuff is not specific. Some of the things that are specific pertains to the playground, the port, and play stuff. That, that stuff is specific, so there's no issues there. So when we get into, there's two ways to look at this. The half of this project is, is equipment, right? And the other half is construction, things that need to be permitted. And so that's where we're gonna get into some time constraints based on that permitting process, based on what the state requires us to do in that process of trying to permit that. So, so, so it's pretty, it's pretty much laid out. So, on the, on the implementation part, with most of the playground stuff, it's pretty cut and dry, you know, what we're asking for. And, and like I said, the one playground guy was on both proposals, so they pretty much look the same. So when we get into the actual site work, that's where we'll get into, you know, a juggling act if we run into some constraints on permitting.
Mr. Hernandez, when you did this in the bid, one of you, is there a way that, is there a performance issue that this is gonna, it's not gonna take four years to build?
I was gonna ask exactly that. So during the pre-bid meeting, I, I asked, do we have any struggle? Do we have any roadblocks that will prohibit us from not having this completed by next year for our 100-year anniversary? I was answered, no. Is that still the case, or do we see potential roadblocks for this?
I mean, from the, from a big-picture standpoint, no, but when you're talking about getting into permitting with the state and conservation and stuff like that, who knows? I don't wanna tell you no, and then we run into a roadblock, you know, so, right?
We, we wanted all this, and we'll have to still come back with an agreement as well. We'll have to negotiate an agreement with whoever y'all choose. But some of the things we may not be able to do, like the reclamation of the, of the lake out there, that may take a while for permitting. So maybe we get everything done but that. So there may be parts that we won't be able to do within that year, that, you know, are somewhat beyond our control.
So, Scott, let me answer your question on this. Would it be possible to not, I don't wanna name anybody, but let's say for argument's sake, it was 4 million, right? That way, nobody thinks I'm playing favorites. So, let's say they came in at 4 million, we approved it for 4 million. Can we then phase it out to Mark's point, where we do what we can quickly without permitting now, and then have it, have the second one, right? So let's say, I think one of them was the pond cleanup. I'm sure that's gonna take some stuff from St. John's or whatnot. Can that be on phase two without going back to council, having to rebid? Or do we have to rebid it if we're not gonna do it in that one, in that first phase?
You can phase it.
You can phase it, as long as the overall number is approved, we can, okay.
That was, that was my question. It's like, I'm just trying to get the-
That obviously would have to be put forth in the contract and priced out accordingly, but yeah, that can be done.
And, and most of that stuff can run concurrent, you know what I'm saying? While, while they're building the playground, they could be working on the permitting and the design. So, you know, it's, you know, it's a juggling act at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I, for, again, from my opinion, I'm not sure what the council thinks, but for next year, for the 100-year celebration, if we were to do a trailhead, which I believe we should, if we can get the, the pickleball courts, the pavilion, the baseball fields, the playground, and the resurfacing of the basketball, right? So the, essentially the pretty stuff, right? We get that done, I don't foresee any major roadblocks with that, 'cause a lot of that's within our own city. You know, now the pond reclamation, all that, that requires St. John, of course, we know how they work, so to your point, that may take longer. But I don't see how we can do this concurrently, so we can get the pretty things done, if you will, before next year.
I mean, I would like to go, when you go concurrently, like, you named five projects to me, that building pickleball courts and putting a playground in. Let's don't build the pickleball courts and then shift, then shift over. It's like, can we, who can, who can push it? So, you're on it.
Yeah, that's kinda the stuff that, that's not permanent required, so, you know, so that can move pretty, pretty quickly.
All right.
Over there, too, the, the interior bathroom renovation's ongoing. The tile looks great. They got the tile work in. The demo's been done, the tile works in. They were, went out there Monday. They were, they had the dividers in, in, but they weren't installed yet. They were in the process of about, they were about to install them. So it's coming along pretty well.
Going back to the bids, Mark, sorry to, sorry to go back. So what are the next steps before we, as a council, see to, to approve it?
So they need to verify all the bids, make sure it's apples to apples, verify references and that sort of thing. Council makes a decision on who to award it to, and then we go into a contract agreement with them. And then it goes back before council for a contract to, to approve, and then they can get started.
So when would it come back before us, so we can award the contract, or award the winner of the bid, rather?
Yeah, so you can, probably, we can probably have all that done by next council meeting, Fred, you think?
We can, we can vet the proposals by then, you know, but, you know, the contract, normally in a bid session, we set anywhere from 30 to 60 days to get this to award. That actually have it before council to award. We can vet that pretty quickly, right? And, but we go back and forth on the contract. And that's, that's really gonna take some time, because this was, this was kinda, kinda like a vague thing. It's a lot of, lot of unanswered questions that need to be answered when we get to the contract portion, so that may take a little time.
So do you think we'll be ready to vote by first meeting of September, so September 2nd?
That's a possibility.
It's better than August. At least I didn't tell you August. He was pushing for August. I gave you September, Fred. Yeah, I would say, let's, let's try to have that goal before it comes for us, September 2nd, right, if you can.
For the, the actual contract?
No, no, just to award the bid. Just so we can keep things moving. Anything else on this?
No, that was it. I just, you're on it.
Okay. Let's see what the next one is.
Before you move forward, can I make a comment on the trash?
The what?
Trash.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
The GFL trucks not picking up stuff, and-
Well, I've been, someone had reached out to me on, on Facebook about Reserve at Mineola. And I have pictures here, and I wanted to mention this on the record, instead of just going to Mark's office and letting him know that we have an issue, that they were leaving the trash bins in the middle of the street, so that no one could drive down the street, so they can clean them. Literally, pictures I have to show you, that these trash bins are in the middle of the street. Once they go finally to clean them, the truck that came prior is leaking again. It made a bigger mess on top of the mess that's out there. So, there's now a concern as to why are they leaving the trash bins in the middle of the road, so people can't drive down there? And it's not just a short amount of time, it was over a couple of hours that these trash bins were there, before actually somebody coming and cleaning them. And excuse me, their exact words was a few hours. Another thing was that they tried to clean the mess, but the mess ended up being worse. I do have photos here, and again, I'm mentioning this because I did let them know that I was going to mention it at our council meeting, that we, we have an issue on top of an issue. And I will be more than glad to share the photos with you, and see how else they can go about cleaning these streets, without having to leave the trash bins, empty trash bins, in the middle of the road to stop people from going down there.
I'll have, what I'll do is, I'll try to get GFL here at the next meeting.
No worries, but I'd like to share this with you after the meeting, if you don't mind reminding me. Thank you. Yep, that's all. Just wanted to make sure that that was on record.
Number 12's been done on the list. Decent to sewer, again, that's on hold until we expand the-
Sorry, the parks, number 12 is Parks Workshop? You said that's done? So, you may, may have an updated list. So, the next one was the Parks Workshop number two, which is gonna be the revisioning of the 30-acre parcel. Now, we've, again, we were gonna use-
On Target? Is that the existing social medium?
Okay, so we're gonna use them. Actually, I was gonna bring this up in our report as well. Where do we stand with the social media RFP, since that's pending, before we could do the surveys on Facebook?
Yeah, we have a, we have a draft, a draft copy, and it's being reviewed before it goes out and hits the street, but we do have a draft, and-
A draft copy of what?
Of, of the, of the, of the-
Social media RFP.
Social media RFP. I thought we already approved this social media RFP a couple meetings ago.
Yeah, I think there may be a couple of minor changes that had to be made, and then it'll be out on the street.
Okay, well, 'cause I know I sent you some people that reached out to me, I sent you, so just make sure when it goes out. Again, I, I thought that when we approved stuff, the RFPs, when, in my opinion, when we approve something on Tuesday, for the RFP to go out, I expect it to be out at least by like, the next Monday. I'd not, a month later. Or it's something needs to be communicated, that the RFP didn't go out. I think the thought is, when we approve things upon council, we assume that it's getting handled in a timely manner. We're kinda like the last, like that last lap. I didn't know that sometimes it was halfway, so just please. I don't know if anybody else feels that way sometimes, but-
100%.
Yeah, we're just-
That's why we're doing this.
Exactly. I just, when I approved the RFP, I'm like, okay, I figured this out, so I can go back. I know that was, I know Amanda, they, some people from Chamber asked for it. I was like, yeah, call Mark, it's requested out.
Yeah, we've had a couple requests of, of people wanting us to let them know when it goes out.
Yeah, well, I thought it was out there, I wouldn't have sent them to you, but I, you know, and then that just makes council look bad, when you say, RFP, like, we approved it last week, get with Mark, and he'll send you where it is, and then we find out that it's not even published yet. So, please.
Okay, next item is the, well, actually, on that, when do we, when can we expect that to be done, Mark? Is that by next week, by next Friday? What do we think? Next year?
Let's shoot for next Friday. We'll have it out.
Good with that?
I'm fine.
And if something changes, I'll let y'all know.
Do you know, where do you post this at? 'Cause people ask me that, too. I have no idea where, to any of these things, just to educate me. I don't know. When you, we say, oh, let's put it out for bid, where are you putting it out for bid? Like, is it in the newsletter? I'm like, where does it go?
So it depends on what it is. Utility projects, we handle one way. On this, we'll definitely have in the paper, we'll have on our website, and if, as you will, we'll have on the-
So there's, there's standard ways. Okay, thank you. I just was curious on how this stuff goes.
Goes to Ether.
Yeah, to the cloud. Thank you.
To the cloud.
Thanks.
All right, next, we have the second phase of Septic Sewer.
Yeah, again, that's on hold until the sewer plant's expanded, but Fred, am I correct in saying it's 100% design?
I think we went through those. Landscaping of City Hall.
Unconsent agenda. Get it done.
Yeah, the goal is to get that done before we have a ribbon cutting next door, so, that's what we're working on.
Next one, you want-
That's the ribbon cutting for this fire station, right, not the next one.
The Memorial Wall for Veterans and First Responders.
So, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Yesterday, they began the concrete preparation and stencil layout. Today, they're sealing the concrete. Tomorrow, they're gonna begin the actual stenciling, which will continue for multiple days. They hope to be complete the next Wednesday, depending on the weather and progress results. The granite has been picked out, and Christine will be coming back with a answer, 'cause she's sending that out for quotes as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to, on that, 'cause I talked to Kelly also, we're doing the breakfast this month. Can you do something at the breakfast to kind of, you wanna, do you wanna do something at the breakfast to kinda get up and say, hey, this is what I've done? This is my project, and maybe some renderings or something like that?
Sure. I'll see if I can get those, I'll see if I can get those, those renderings available for that, yeah, on the 17th.
And then I heard positive about the renaming, if you wanna do something about that, then too. Whatever you feel comfortable with, I just wanna give you your piece-
Yes, absolutely.
At the chamber breakfast, to like, okay, this is, I've done this, and I've done this, as your projects.
Absolutely. Also, in regards to the renaming, we have tentative, as of right now, for August, excuse me, Saturday, August 2nd. But that was just discussed today, so I have to get some verification from the family as to exactly-
Love for you to be able to present that also, as I invite the chamber and the community and start socializing that.
Right. I know, I'm, I'm, right now, from, the sheriff is asking, sheriff's office is asking for an invitation, a formal invitation, to be sent out to them, letting them know what's happening, so we're on it.
You're on. I'm just not, I'm just trying to give you a platform to-
Ten-four, no, I appreciate it.
And to, to do it, and I, 'cause I did, you weren't at the last chamber breakfast, but I did see-
No, I wasn't.
I did see Kelly, and she, I mentioned it to her, she hadn't mentioned it yet, but can y'all just take care of it, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that.
I was trying to get the agenda ready for that, and like, okay, I need to make sure that we do that.
We're, we're gonna be bringing back, beyond consent agenda, some approval just to change the resolution a little bit, so that it perfectly matches what the state has. We sent our, ours to the state, but FDOT wanted to change it a little bit, and ours have, they have to match exactly. So we'll be coming back, probably by next council meeting with that.
Next up, we have the pier on Lake Mineola.
The pier on Lake Mineola, right now, we have not, we have not made progress on that yet.
We have that one bid, though, right?
We have a couple of quotes.
We have a couple of bids, actually.
Can I piggyback on the pier piece? 'Cause this was another concept I had. It could be a dumb idea, but I'm just throwing it out there. If we'd rather than doing the pier, I know we took down the building at the, the library, and it looks really good without the building there. So I don't wanna put another building there, but we could do a pier over the retention pond, as like a reading nook. I didn't know if that was something that, that you could, it's kind of a dry pond, just noodle it. I'm not saying it's a perfect idea, but I was just-
A deck.
A deck, just more of a-
Patio?
A gond, you know, just something that goes out over that. It kinda, there's a big retention pond there, and you could-
Right.
Put a deck over there, and it gives, it goes to read, but it also gives them grass. Noodle it, moving on. I just wanted to, I was like, well, if they're doing a pier, maybe they're riding a boga, buy one pier and get a free pier.
If it's the council will, I'd love to have, inspire someone, you know, do a site plan for, for that park where the pier goes. I think where, where it comes across will be important, and, you know, do we create a crosswalk there? Do we line it up with that, or do we move it further down? Be some discussion and consensus on, on some of those things, and having it laid out on paper would be helpful.
I think just when, if we can get something on paper, so that we then can move forward with it, that would be definitely a great first step to it. 'Cause with, I mean, I, I have a third person also that could, that we can get a quote from, but the two I presented, they're waiting, they're waiting to hear.
I think it'll be important that we mark out an area of where it's gonna go exactly.
Yes, sir.
Is this, is this pier, and I'm just asking-
Sure.
Is the pier- Is this, is this pier, and I'm just asking, is the pier a Manyola pier, or is it a reflection pier to complement the memorial?
I think it could be both.
I don't, I'm just saying, so, as you're going that way, to Mark's point of where you put the pier, does it come, do you come off the memorial down to the walkway, to the pier, straight, or you don't, you wanna do it to, you know what I'm saying, just where you position it, but y'all can discuss that.
And I think that's something that we can go out there, and we can look at it and see how we can position it, whether we position it off of the gazebo or off of the, the actual memorial, so I'd like to see if we can meet up and, and at least start from there, and then move forward, because, yeah, I'd like to get this...
Is it okay with council, if I go ahead and have Inspire do that, if it's less than ten thousand dollars, do a, do a whole plan for that?
Is there, is, is there an idea, I don't know if you can do it, is there a way that, when we, if we were to do a pier, that you could, we would allow Manyola residents to purchase a plank in memory of, or
Yes.
Something a family of, or something like that?
You, you could do that. It may slow down the project, but you could do that.
Right, but it could also, you could also still move forward with...
The way the projects go here, we got plenty of time.
No, 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 but listen, you can actually move forward with it, and you can add to it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, so we can just...
So, it could even be, instead of the plank where you walk on, it could be on the top area, so it doesn't...
Well, yeah, whatever you think. I'm just saying, something that, it's just like, if you go to Mount, if you go to Mont Verde, they've got walks there, little brick walks and stuff like that.
We could always build it, and maybe there's a way to build it and then engrave the names into the, into the wood later.
Eric's got a router. He says he'll take care of it.
I'll start here and end up here.
There's your woodworker at, right there.
All right, next, uh, the splash pad, the library. I think it's the last, it's been a while since we talked about this, but it was designed pending.
Yeah, I've had the, uh, I've had the engineer here the last several meetings, but, um, he's not here tonight. We did ask him to come. Um, I'll have him here at the next meeting, but he's got, he's got kind of a general site plan I showed you, and, uh, to get some input from you guys, and then we can, uh, move forward and, uh, you know, as long as that, that layout's okay with him. But he was here, he was here to talk about it, and I'll make, I'll make sure he's here next time.
Do you have one of those in your office?
What's that?
Do you have that site plan in your office by chance?
Um, I may be able to print some off.
Just so that we can move forward, and then if we have any questions, we can be prepared for, for when it comes next time, or at least send it to, email it to us.
Email it.
You know, so we don't have to, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Hernan?
But if nothing has changed from the last time that you showed me, um, I mean, you made some really great points.
Yeah, he had talked to me this week about doing one in color, and I think he wanted to do that for you guys.
Okay. So, whenever you get the color one in, that'll be great, and if you can email it to us, that'll be perfect for then our next meeting.
All right, and the last thing on my list, uh, this is the overlook in the park. This is a thirty acre behind the school. Uh, I think Scott, you were gonna look into it, see if we can do a conservation easement.
Um, yes, the short answer would be, we wouldn't recommend a conservation easement, um, for us as a local government. We certainly can, I would suggest, if you wanted to go that way, that we could rezone it as conservation land within the city, but to put then a, our own conservation easement over it would just handcuff the city if we ever wanted to use it for something else, but, but the rezoning would accomplish the desire to, to, frankly, it would count towards conservation lands, which could benefit the city too.
I think the, the vision is, when I go to Florida Conservation Lands, if you, everybody talks about all this conservation in Lake County. Um, if you go to the, to Florida Conservation, there's only a couple real parcels of conservation land, and I do know, because my leader, that used to be my leader, Disney, he puts almost seven hundred acres in conservation easement in Groveland. Just because it was, it was a whole Yellowstone thing. He just, he made it seven hundred and made, and made sure that he could put bodies in it, so he can have a cemetery on there and for his family and his, any of his siblings, any of his descendants could build a house there. Besides that, nobody can live on that land through perpetuity, and he, he locked it down pretty serious, but, um...
Well, I think the whole purpose is that...
Until we lock it down.
We handcuff the future council.
Yeah, so we just need to make sure, but is there anything we can do proactively to get that ball rolling?
Well, that's why I said, I would recommend, if you wanted to go that way, is we could, the city can initiate a land use change to change that from public facilities, which you could have built stuff on it now, to a conservation land use. Those have to go through public hearings, they're advertised, so to get to your concern, if, if they ever wanted to try to change that in the future, it's not something a council can just do. They'd have to try to undo it, advertise, go through public hearings, and get the, basically, the approval of the people if they wanted to change it in the future. So, it's a significant move without, um, I mean, no disrespect to the state agencies and all their regulatory thing, but if you go into conservation easements and put all those things in, in, you know, we, we, this is land that the city owns and controls, and we just, I, I, I wouldn't recommend that we slap a conservation easement over it that, that we can't undo in any way. Again, I understand you don't want, you wanna put some limitations, but I think the land use change is a perfect, perfect compromise, if you will.
Because it's either that, or leave the fire station where it's at, and put a conservation easement, easement in front of the fire station.
You could, you can make sure it stays parkland.
I just wanna make sure that it's locked down, but I think that's, that we just need to...
If you'd like to do that, we can certainly...
Like, we can always go, we can put a couple s- constraints on it, and then if we wanna go more, instead of going a hundred degrees, we can go about fifteen, put some on there.
And, and the public's opinion may change. You know, at one time, Troyhead Park was really meant to be sort of a green space. Um, the public has since kind of changed, and they, they like the more active park there, and if, you know, it gives, it gives even the public some flexibility in what they want back there.
Just creating a speed bump.
Okay. And that, and that, by the way, as some of you know, we're still working with the, with the school board to determine, um, they're willing to give back some of the land that they took to us, and depending, so if we're gonna be using it for conservation purposes, that can perhaps change those decisions, but in some ways make it easier if we're not looking to use them, so.
That's fine. Okay. So, anything else, Mr. Hernan?
We'll move forward with that if you'd like.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Consent agenda. Any questions, concerns in the audience about the consent agenda? Um, I do have one question, if you don't mind. Item four, surplus aggressive tools, stools, chairs, and tables. In the back of the building, we got two cars that are parked. That grass is really high. That is actually a code violation, probably. The cars either need to get moved somewhere else, or they need to get purged, but it really makes it look bad back there, so if you can make sure...
Actually, I, uh, I addressed those this morning. Those are fire department vehicles. They're still operational, so we're gonna, we're gonna relocate them. They just, they were parked there, and when the guys came to mow, they were still sitting there, so, but they'll be taken care of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, delivered off of that, in the next budget cycle, can we get some, some different vehicles? Those things look sad. Seriously, Mark. I think I drove those when I first got elected. Like, those things are old. But seriously...
Some I think are backups. Those, those couple of the backups are admin car.
Yeah, so the, the white vehicle, we actually just replaced for Jared Summers, but it's still operational. We're just determining on whether we're gonna surplus it or keep it. Um, and then the gray one, we also use as a staff vehicle. Uh, it just helps us, like, if we're gonna send some guys to training, they could jump in that car and take it, um, so it's not...
I'm not sure I brought that car to leave the city limits.
It's oper, it's not pretty, but it's operational, um, so.
Okay.
But, but we actually, me and Fred had a conversation about that this morning, about those cars, because I guess when the guys come to mow...
That's fine. It's just...
We'll get them, they're on my radar. I'll get them squared away.
Okay, thanks a lot. Didn't mean to call you out on it, but I was just like...
But they're, I, I'll, I'll take care of them. That's all I mean.
So, you're training your staff well. You'll keep them till the wheels fall off, Mark, I see. That's the Mark Johnson school of cars.
That's how we're at, where we're at right now.
That's how we rule.
Okay.
It's a death of a thousand cuts, so try to keep, keep those little cuts from happening.
Okay, thanks. We're good. Anybody, any questions, concerns, consent agenda? Can I get a motion for approval on the consent agenda?
I'll approve the consent agenda. Make a motion.
I'll second.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, second ordinance for the House of Worship. Second reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten on second reading in order to the city council, the city of Manyola, Florida, amending the land development code to add House of Worship as a special exception use in the B-one business, amending section one oh six dash two. Establish special exception conditions for houses of worship in the B-one district, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
So, this, because of the limitation of public facility zoning for churches, this will allow them to come in and apply for a special exception, but again, you guys decide whether or not you wanna allow it. It's only in B-one, not I-one. And, you know, we put certain conditions on it, and it, they, the, one of the things is, they can't object to alcohol being served in restaurants and, and things around them, businesses around them.
Sounds good. Any questions, concerns, anybody from the audience? Bring it back for a motion. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Sorry, Eric. Do you wanna take it?
Debbie. Debbie's got a motion, and I think Eric seconded. Is that good?
That's good.
Okay, got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Impact fee, second reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven on second reading in order to the city council, the city of Manyola, Florida, regulating the city of Manyola water and wastewater connection fees, providing for legislative findings and intent adopting a water and wastewater final capacity fee study dated March thirty-first, two twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, as amended. Amending chapter forty-two impact fees of the Code of Ordinances relating to water and wastewater utility impact fees, providing for codification of Scrivener's errors, providing for conflicts, providing for savings clause, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. As stated in the workshop, we recommend approval.
Anybody in the audience? We got council for comments or a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh seven impact fees.
Got a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Final plat.
Here, I had this already, and then I think... There it is. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution of the city council, the city of Manyola, Florida, designating the city manager or their designee as the administrative authority to approve plats and replats pursuant to section one seventy-seven point oh seven one Florida statutes as amended by Senate Bill seven eighty-four, two thousand twenty-five, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. Um, this was a, and I'll talk a little bit about this later, I'll keep it short, but one of the legislative changes they made this year is that their final plats don't, will not, don't come back to council, that they are, have to be administratively approved, and, but you as the council get to pick who does that, so we honestly aren't sure how it's gonna fall out. He didn't want it, but we named, uh, Mark as the city manager, or his, or his designee.
He's certain there'll be a designee.
To, uh, be the one to administratively approve these plats moving forward, so this resolution just authorizes Mark to do that.
Okay, cool. Anybody in the audience?
Recommend approval.
Anybody about the council for discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, motion, oh.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Debbie got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Final public comment.
Dave Yeager, twenty-seven fifty, Purple Mall Court. Osceola Court, JFL truck broke down, ant freeze, two hours to get out there. Oakland, two or three hours, young lady in the audience is sitting there. You know, we get treated like stepchildren with GFL. Uh, it's not like they don't have the money. Um, the other thing is, the, the purveyor that came the other day, I, he does work for me. Um, I've known him over twenty years. The issue is, there's no secret sauce, and the secret sauce is, when it happens, do it. Get somebody out there to do it, not three or four weeks later. So, at the end of the day, through this, uh, dance we're doing, it's gonna make a difference, but everybody's gonna feel warm inside. But it, it doesn't make any sense that GFL puts their crap in our city. Then I had, uh, one person, it was a barber shop in town. He said he called the city for a new can. His lid's been broken for over a year, and he couldn't get a can, so I told him to call again, and just keep calling until he gets taken care of, but GFL, again, the secret sauce is, when it happens, you know, you can ignore it, and they ignore it, and then they think three weeks or four weeks later, when you point it out, it's gonna happen. Well, that's not how it works. And that purveyor is a really good purveyor, been doing it for twenty, thirty years, and the deal is, is they do for waste management and all that, and you have to do it instantly. And, you know, I, I do some high-end projects over in Citrus County. Waste management calls me, pays relatively good money, but it's now, and the people like that, and it looks like you're really paying attention, so, again, GFL has a problem besides old crappy trucks and things like that. Um, Mark, place looks incredible. I think the doors are asked backwards of the fire department, but they look incredible, so. So, if you turn around and look this way, it looks great, so it's fine. But the place looks like, uh, I, on my, uh, Facebook, I always get abandoned cities, and I have to tell you, at one point, I said, this looks like a abandoned city. You know, the trees are falling down, the sign's blown out, you know, we got irrigation, we got tractors with no hoods on the front, so it doesn't look abandoned city. It looks like a great city, so, you know, nobody beat on Mark because it looks great. It looks like, actually like we're back to being a city again, and the library actually looks like a library. Um, and I think at the end of the day, you know, again, I'm the Simon Cowell of the city. I wouldn't blow smoke up your ass just because you wanted to hear it. I, I meant it, you know, it's, it's definitely, it looks nice. And I, uh, I smell poop all the time at the wastewater treatment plant, whatever they're doing. I got a little tinge every now and then, but it looks like they're proceeding, and then if you up at Shurgaloe, if anybody at council go up to Shurgaloe, whoever the contractor we use for the, uh, for the water plant kicked ass. I mean, they came, they did, they left. It's done. It's beautiful. Mary Jane and Frankie. You can't forget them, please. We need to have a plaque on them.
I thought we were gonna do a resolution.
Yeah, we, we, I would, you know, I would like that, but that's...
But I think we need a resolution with a plaque and all that, so.
We'd like to do, like, the public works for Frankie, because he was here forever, and then Mary Jane, so I just don't wanna make sure we don't forget that. This is a, the street cleaning, Sid looks wonderful. Um, I don't know if I ever told you this, but the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, there is a piece of land right next door. I may not mention it, and I know we need a plan, but the plan is, when we're all gone and we're up to this and poop, we might need some more land. So, it's there, and it's for the picking. You don't have to pay anybody for loss of business, because there's no business being done there, and you can touch the thing. So, if I haven't mentioned it, or I forgot to mention it, I just wanna mention it again. And the other thing is an application fee for dumpsters. I'm in the dumpster business. I truly don't want this, but... I went down to Wellness, Wellness Way today. Wellness Way, I, I've been on two contracts. One was a, another Del Webb for five hundred homes, another Pulte for a thousand homes. There's two thousand homes already built. There's another thousand homes for, uh, Lennar, and then there's another Pulte project for another thousand homes. So, a lot's going on, and so we just need to be prepared, but at the end of the day, two or three hundred thousand dollars with application fees, I know they're not impact fees, Mr. Lawyer, but they're application fees, and there's no reason we can't have an application per house, because at the end of the day, when all these developers go home and they're having their martinis and eating their, you know, thousand dollar steak dinner, we're here holding the bag. And so, again, uh, they charged me an application fee. To do business with them, we should charge them application fee, because the pleasure of doing the business with us. So, thank you. Have a wonderful fourth, and if I didn't mention, there's land right next to city property. Have a good day.
Anyone else in the public? Can you bring it back? Mark?
Uh, I'll try to make it quick. The, uh, the pen testing, uh, will be on the next agenda.
Which testing?
Where I talked about speed humps.
Cybersecurity.
Duke Energy will be performing some vegetation management over the next, in the area over the next couple of weeks. We realize how important that is, because that helps keep the power reliable during hurricanes and things of that nature, keeping the limbs and stuff out of the power lines, so. It's important work, but they'll be doing it over the next, next two or three weeks. The Heroes Memorial Park, um, we're at a decision point on the granite. We have... We have two options for black granite, we have American black granite, but the problem with that is there's white marbling or veining inside of it. So it won't be just pure black, or you have Indian black granite, which is pure black. I just kind of want an idea of what.
I actually sent an email out to Christine, because she sent one out to me.
Oh, okay, I missed it, sorry.
I defer to Pam on whatever she wants, I don't care.
Yep, me too.
So Pam's decision, your, your part, your decision.
I actually, and just waiting for Christine to get back to me. She sent me that email. Hold on, please hold.
Joe, do you have a, do you have a preference on? So Joe's bought into it.
Looks like another to me.
Right, and I, I went around, like, I looked at Claremont, uh, Claremont Fire Department, they have one there. Um, actually, uh, Dave Yeager had one for his headstone, so I was actually able to, you know, visually see it instead of just photos. So I've been in contact with, uh, with Christine and, and email. My apologies, I don't know if she CC'd you on that.
Yeah, she, she's been out the last couple of days unexpectedly. Okay, and then, um, we were able to get, there, oh, speaking of black granite, there's a, towards the back of the cemetery, there's, there's a pretty, um, back there. For comparisons. We've got, we had some, we had some volunteers over the last couple of weeks and they pressure washed the headstones. We were able to level some of them off, um, that were kind of sinking in, um, with the volunteers. And we're, uh, working with Inspire to do a whole site plan there. And we, we've been meeting on that pretty regularly, we did a site visit, we, we had a team's meeting even this week. So they're gonna, part of that's gonna be to have a, you know, to do it all properly, we need to have a survey, uh, redone. To capture that, you know, that, where's that road right of way and all that. We also are wanting to have a GPR, um, map done of the, of the cemetery. Because, you know, back in, you know, back in the day, there's, there's records that go back before, before any of our time, before we were even born, um, that may not be fully accurate, so we would like to have all that done. So they're pulling together all the quotes for that now. Survey, uh, ground penetration radar, uh, and then, and then a whole site plan. We also have them ready to do a site plan for, that'll come back by the next council meeting for, uh, the community garden, uh, area, and that will include, uh, uh, an afternoon, sort of public input meeting out on site. So we'll have that for the council at the next council meeting. And I think that's it.
Anything for the city manager?
No, and going back to the granite, the last point of contact I had with Christine was June twenty-six. And that was it. But it was more of a question on the type of granite, whether it's black granite that has some white vining marbling in it, while Indian black granite is more of a true solid black. And there was also a third option, it's called Minnesota black, which also has some marbling in it, but it's throughout the whole thing, instead of just a little swirl here and there, so. It's interesting. But, yeah. I've been in contact with her, thank you, sir.
Anything for the city manager?
No, nothing.
Mark, with the, now that, when we move all the functions, so you.
So the new firehouse, what are we gonna do with the existing firehouse station?
With the existing firehouse?
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we've been working with Lake County on an agreement for them to house the ambulances there. Okay, I want to make sure that was made forward, okay. Alright, that's it.
Anything for the city manager?
No.
Mark, when we had the, um, league luncheon here, it turned out really nice, but we identified, and we'd mentioned, but we never really followed up on, is, everybody kind of sat like at the table there to talk, and we talked about doing high-rise chairs. Can we get about six of the high-rise? Something that complements this, and can you kind of do that quickly, so we can actually use them for the breakfast too? It's kind of a double-headed sword, but, um, just, of course, when they met, they were sitting at the table down here, it was the representative, legislative staff was down there, so they were at eye level. And if it would be more, if you had kind of the high level, like a chair where you could sit people here and they had presentations, they could talk, you know what I'm saying?
No.
I, I understand what you're saying. You, you just, you just want the chairs, not, not like high-rise tables, right?
No, we got the tables, we just need those chairs about, a little bit taller to, the stools, so if you had somebody up.
Okay.
Stools, high chair, high-rise chairs.
High back stools.
Yes.
We'll try to match them best we can.
Yeah, just something that, so, because it was just weird, because they were having to answer everything down there, so if you had a panel, you could set a panel up here for, to talk. Does that make sense?
Yes, no, it does, yeah.
Get it in your generation, sorry. Thank you for everything, Mark.
Thank you.
So. Scott?
Today's July first, everyone's filed their Form Ones, correct?
Yes.
Correct? Correct? Yes.
Or we'll have it done. One way, either has or will.
Yes.
Thank you, alright, so that's, uh, today's technically the due date now, I, I'll just say that, leave it at that. Also July first, the first wave of the, um, new legislative bills, there's a few like the naming our city manager as the administrative authority for plats. Those bills went into effect today. Many of the bills don't take effect until October, though. I will spare you the report, what, but what I'll do is, there is a sixty-four page League of Cities report that goes through every bill that passed and highlights the things that affect municipalities, so I, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat that for you. The, although it's sixty-four pages long, the bills that passed are only twenty pages. Then it spends over forty pages to go through all the bills that failed. I don't think you need to go through that except to just look at the topics, but it's important, though, because most of those bills will come back again, they have a way of coming back every year, so just to get an idea. Some of the ones, like the CRA that we were worried about and others, I think they will probably be back again, so you can look at those, but concentrate, of course, on the ones that passed. The Live Local, if you can believe it, the Live Local Three, I think they're calling this, there's another way of Live Local, they've given them even more ability to expand affordable housing projects than they already had. But we'll, we'll deal with that. There are also some changes, mandatory timeframes on development permits and application process, clearly the builders lobby was active this year. There are a variety of bills, some of them miscellaneous, I mean, they've preempted artificial turf now, so we, you know, we cannot, remember we have an ordinance that prohibits turf and, or limits it, it's now allowed and we can't, not yet, until it takes effect, but it's basically allowed if they meet certain parameters to put artificial turf in, I'm not sure who was pushing for that, but there's a variety of other things to take a look in there, but I'll, I'll email around everybody so you can have it. Obviously, if you have any questions, um, let me know, I'll be going to a conference later, later, well, this month, later in July, where they'll be talking about a lot of these, so I'll come back with that, and then by that time, you've had a chance to read it and I can give you a little more update on some, so.
I think you should read us all sixty-three pages.
The question, I have two questions, one, one, one is a question, one is a statement, is one, have you read all sixty pages?
No, I have not.
Oh, you can do it right now.
Two, you sound really excited to go to this conference to talk about sixty pages.
I'm just looking for summaries all the time, and I always start out thinking I'm gonna read the whole thing and then it gets really boring, but, uh, so, anyway.
So you're not gonna read it to us?
No, if you'd like, I can, I can read it to you.
Go ahead.
It'd be like book, books on tape or whatever they call them now, so. And then this is a remnant from the past, I don't think I ever got back to you. At one point, we talked about, can you make Crooked Can the official beer of the city? You know, you can.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't think any other city that I could find has actually had.
Nope, we will be the first.
Well, there you go, yeah, we, we found, um, some interesting parallels. For instance, uh, the University of South Florida has like an official beer that they've named, you know, you're familiar with it, yeah. And there were a couple others that we found, but I could not find another city that had an official beer.
We would be the first.
It would be the first city.
Okay, well.
Our research to do that.
You know, just, being the lawyer, I think we would somehow have to, you know, of course, throw out drink responsibly or something if we did that, but I certainly think we could do it.
How fast can you turn that around?
You can do it just as simply as having a proclamation or a resolution to do it.
Let's do it.
And, um, you know, you may, perhaps you can do something.
You had the breakfast?
You could certainly perhaps do something fancier if, whenever they're gonna have their ribbon cutting or their next, next thing coming through.
Well, it's the official beer of Orlando Magic. Crooked Can.
It is?
Yes.
I didn't know that, huh.
And at our ribbon cutting, they gave us a sample, it had the Orlando Magic.
Do you think we can have something for the chamber breakfast, something available for the chamber breakfast?
When's the chamber, chamber breakfast?
Uh, July seventeenth, Thursday.
We, we, we can shoot for that. If you want. Yeah, so your next meeting would be the fifteenth, right before that chamber breakfast, so perhaps, we, let's shoot to try to get some. I don't have any statistics, if you will, on what you, I mean, usually when you have these, you have a lot of whereas's and things, I don't know if somebody has that or even Crooked Can. No one's, I think, talked to Crooked Can about this possibility, I think you'd want to make sure they don't have any reservations, um.
I think we mentioned it when they were in the audience the last time as well. But, yeah.
Alright, well, I'll talk with our city manager and we'll see if we can get some, we'll, we'll shoot to try to have a resolution for you at the next meeting that we.
Perfect, thank you.
But you can't go.
And that was it.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Does that mean we could have Crooked Can beer at every council meeting now?
The non-alcoholic type?
Sure.
Well, they have.
That may not be recommended.
They, they serve food at Mont Verds.
They do, they do. They, I think it's once a month, right?
They got a much smaller city, though, much smaller town.
But we're serving alcohol, not food.
We're serving. I've got nothing for the city manager, thank you.
Well, this is for the attorney.
I mean, for the attorney, my, my.
I have nothing for Scotty.
I'm good, thank you, Scott.
So I would like to thank you, Scott, for coming in early today.
Sure.
If that was billable hours, it was definitely worth it. So, thank you.
Happy to help. Okay.
Yes, and I said city manager because I forgot to mention something to the city manager before, thanking him, um, and the city staff for going out to Sullivan Road, that was completely washed out, and it was intense, and I'll be, I have pictures so I could show you, but they did come out there and they did help out, so thank you and thank the staff for helping. Now, going back to my reports, the only thing that I have for this evening, we already spoke about tentative August second. And then the other thing is, the sheriff's office is having their Project Kid Connect, that is the backpack giveaway, Project Kid, Project Kid Connect. That's where they give out the backpacks. And that is Saturday, July twelfth.
Where are they doing that at?
And that's at the South Substation.
They used to do it here.
They did, but it's, it's huge, and it's a really, really big event, and with all the equipment that they have and the resources and just everything, it's, it's best to have it over there. Um, and the parking too. The parking is even an issue for them over there, I can't even imagine what it would be over here. But, yeah, just putting it out there, July twelfth. Oh, the two, yeah, then we will definitely fit them.
Actually, I got a tech from the crews, they've already been moved.
Oh, look at that.
I thought you were gonna say they needed to be jumped.
So, yeah, that's all for me this evening, thank you.
I have nothing tonight, too, happy, uh, July fourth, everyone.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Mark, for everything. And I'll have a happy Fourth of July.
Happy and safe.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Should have named it, that way Scott can read all sixty-three pages.
It is too true. I, I, I did start, like, I was gonna sit down and read it, I got to like page three, I'm like, oh, this is just really, really slogging down, huh? I skimmed it after that.
That was the road. Sullivan Road.
Yep. Going to Yeager, Yeager Road. Yep. Pretty bad.